I'm going to call the Monday, October the fourteenth, excuse me, fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Planning Board meeting to order. At this time, we are going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'm going to ask for any disqualifications on any board members on any case we're giving ready to hear. Okay, here in line, we do have a quorum, and I am also going to ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Number five, on the agenda, approval of minutes for our September the tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. Y'all had a chance to look at the minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise. Okay, seeing no old, excuse me, no old business, we're going to move forward to new business. First case in front of us this evening, Planning Board twenty-four dash twenty-three, Michael, and I hope I pronounced this, Bedell.
That's perfect.
Got it, okay. Request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Four, Use Standards, Sections four point two point one, Agricultural Uses, to establish required setback for manure stockpiles associated with animal husbandry in the single-family residential isolated district, and to expand the yearly prohibition period of manure stockpiles by one month, extending it from August thirty-first to September thirtieth. At this time, we're going to hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment sponsored by Mr. Bedell related to animal husbandry in the SFI District, and you can see here the proposed changes to the UDO Section four point two point one, under the maintenance required, there's already a provision that says manure stockpiles shall not exceed six feet in height and shall not be permitted during the period from May one to August thirty-first. Mr. Bedell's text amendment expands on that and adds a little bit more requirements for these manure stockpiles in the SFI District. You will notice in number two here on the same page for under minimum setbacks, there's a provision that says all barns, pens, and enclosures shall be located at least a hundred linear feet from lot lines and drinking water sources, and this particular amendment is going to add a setback requirement for the manure stockpiles that are permitted associated with animal husbandry, and also extend the prohibition period for those manure stockpiles in the SFI District. So you can see here the proposed language is that in the SFI District, manure stockpiles shall not exceed six feet in height, shall be located at least a hundred linear feet from lot lines and water sources, and shall not be permitted during the period from May first until September thirtieth. And staff does recommend approval and has a policy, land use policy or goal, rather, two that may be applicable here to the proposed text amendment, and you're familiar with the text amendment review standards that you may review and consider when you're deciding whether to approve or deny the text amendment application, and staff does recommend approval of the request. And the suggested consistency statement is that the text amendment is consistent with the Imagine Currituck twenty forty vision plan, including land use goal two. Let's go back to land use goal two really briefly. That is to carefully consider the design and location of intensive and potentially incompatible land uses to mitigate compatibility issues such as environmental quality, safety, overburdening, local infrastructure, scale, use, design, location, and adverse effects. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Any questions for staff?
So this is also for horses? Is this for horses?
Horses have, are considered equestrian facilities, and they have different standards. This is for animal husbandry uses.
A question about the number one C, using, uses maintaining hoofed animals shall maintain nine thousand square feet per animal kept on site. It doesn't necessarily specify the quality of the land. I was thinking in terms of somebody who had three acres of which has one higher dry piece, provided it has nine thousand square feet that can keep the animal there, is that correct?
Correct, that's correct, yes, sir. And that's existing language.
Okay.
The only proposed language before you tonight is that underlined under four C.
So it's actually tightening up the regulations is pretty much what it's doing.
In that zoning district.
Yeah. Anyone signed up to speak on this case?
Get applicant.
The applicant, come forward, just state your name and address.
My name is Michael Bedell, I live at two zero six South End Road, and that's in Knott's Island.
And you can speak to the case.
Okay, so this is something that I honestly never would have really thought of, you know, looking at or amending until it became an actual personal problem of mine. So I happen to live on a twenty acre plot of property, and I've been there for about five years, and our home is fairly close to the home that is next door, never had any issues with, you know, the people that lived there prior, had a new set of homeowners that bought the place after the gentleman passed away, and the wife couldn't take care of that four acres, it was too much for her because she was in her late seventies. And when the new folks moved in, one of the first things that they did is just filled the entire backyard with like barn animals, and it's a pretty small backyard, and then they started intentionally like lining the property line with like piles of feces, I mean literally right on the property line, and it got to the extent that I couldn't even go outside or enjoy being in my yard without, I mean, not trying to be crude, but without being like, felt like you were being punched in the face with a pile of feces, I mean, it was horrible. So I, I think it's fair to request that a setback of a hundred feet be put in place because I, I just don't feel that as a resident, I should have to smell horse or pig feces, you know, right up on my property. I feel like if it's your feces from your animals, I think it's fair that it be placed within your property versus, you know, putting it right on the edge of mine, or vice versa. I shouldn't be able to put a giant pile of feces right next to your property.
Okay. All righty, that sums it up. Any, any, any questions for the applicant?
Did it extend, I mean, was it six, more than six feet?
No, no, but it was just pile, pile, you know, ten feet pile, like.
Is it along a ditch line as well?
No, no. To give you context, there was a dispute over whose property was what, which I had, I took a long time going to court to settle that, turns out I was right, they had numerous things, they were trying to build on my property, that's all been settled, they were ordered by a judge to remove all of those items because it was well within my property, and as sort of like some weird retribution, then the piles of feces started showing up. Yes, this is my life.
That's a shame.
It is unfortunate, yes, ma'am, I agree.
Any, any more questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Any discussion between board members? Okay, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion for either approval or denial.
I move to approve PB twenty-four dash twenty-three, Michael Bedell, text amendment because the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck twenty forty vision plan, including land use goal two.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed likewise, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just let the applicant know that most likely this case will be scheduled for the November fourth Board of Commissioners meeting, and staff will be following up with you prior to that meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Where's the appropriate place to exit? I feel like I came in totally the wrong way.
Yeah, you come in this way.
Thank you for this. One good evening. Planning Board twenty-four dash twenty-two, Currituck County, request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Two, Administration, Section two point three point eight, public hearing procedures to clarify the public participation procedures for evidentiary hearings. This time, we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe it was sometime last year, maybe the year before, there was an attempt to kind of clean up the language with respect to clarifying how public comment or public participation could occur with evidentiary hearings, and that language did come to this board, which this board did recommend denial, and there was some discussion about wanting to make sure that it was clear that who could participate in an evidentiary hearing, and so that text amendment went to the Board of Commissioners and the board, also, I believe, denied the language. So this is, I did work with the county attorney on this language, you may also have already seen your brochure there that talks about evidentiary hearings and a citizen's guide to those, and so this is the language that, this is the new proposed language to try to provide a little bit more clarity that we're not removing public comment from all of the, the types of hearings that are before the Board of Commissioners. So the changes here are supposed to help clarify that evidentiary hearings are different from legislative matters, and that the purpose is not to solicit public opinion and comment, but to gather facts. And so you can see here in Chapter two, two point three point eight of the ordinance, there's a proposed amendment to number three, which previously said public comment, and now will say public participation. The existing language will remain for the legislative public hearings, which shows that the types of hearings that this board hears. And there's new proposed language in B that says for evidentiary hearings, a party withstanding or a non-party witness may present testimony in accordance with Section two point three point eight, opportunity to present testimony and evidence. And then in the part B here, under the conduct of the public hearing, we're going to accept evidentiary hearings under the rights of all persons, that a person may appear because, as we just said, that needs to be a party withstanding or a non-party witness presenting Then under evidentiary hearings, Section C, we are proposing to add language that says that a non-party witness with personal knowledge may be afforded a reasonable opportunity to present sworn factual, non-repetitive, and material testimony relevant to the application at the discretion of the person chairing the body conducting the evidentiary hearing. So that would apply to Board of Adjustment Chair or Board of Commissioners Chair. I just put the brochure in the packet that I also passed out, and one of the things that I think staff might be able to do, I don't know, I need to talk to Shree about this because it might be a big expense, is potentially adding these brochures in with letters that go out to adjacent property owners, might be something we do, just to, to help educate on how you can participate in, in these hearings. And so staff's recommending approval of the request because it's consistent with the UDO, and it clarifies the evidentiary hearings, hearing procedures, and I'd be happy to answer questions of the board at this time.
Any questions for staff?
So this pamphlet, this is what's in effect now, or what's proposed?
The pamphlet is, is general information about quasi judicial hearings.
Okay.
So evidentiary hearings, so this is something the county attorney produced to help with the education piece on how can I participate in a hearing that's quasi judicial. So it's just giving some guidance. The clarity in the ordinances, or the, the changes to the UDO are just providing clarity and just differentiating between the two types of hearings.
On the, the, I guess it's C one B, it says a non-party witness. Does this say a non-party witness can testify, the pamphlet?
Yeah, the pamphlet probably doesn't say that.
Okay, I just, because I don't see it there.
It says, the pamphlet was written before the, the ordinance, and we could potentially add some language in here.
Well, that's what I figured, it would have to be modified because under the, under the third fold, it's different.
Yeah, it's going to be under the, what kind of evidence and testimony does the board hear, and then it's in the second paragraph there, it says, individuals providing expert opinion must be qualified as experts based on their education, experience, credentials, et cetera, and provide factual evidence upon which they base their expert opinion. I can talk to the county attorney about trying to expand or updating this based off the UDO changes that are made.
Okay.
What is the current process for notifying, this is for adjacent or contiguous property owners? So what is the current process for property owners to be notified and how much time is typically given to the person that's being notified, the property owner?
So the mailed letters are generally mailed, is this, correct me if I'm wrong, Shree, ten days prior to the hearing, the mailing?
At least ten days.
At least ten days.
So it's. Can be no less than ten days.
And it's, and it's property owners within five hundred feet of the subject parcel.
Okay, somewhere in five hundred feet.
And then the, you know, we still post properties with the signs prior to the hearing as well. There's also a publication in the newspaper that runs, Shree, you have that language off the top of your head, the publication in the paper, it's two publications, one is...
It has to be two weeks published in the paper, two weeks, it cannot be less than ten days, the last publication cannot be less than, first publication, sorry, the first publication cannot be less than ten days prior to the meeting. The first publication. The first publication cannot be less than five, ten days before the meeting. So the second publication could theoretically be, if you had the Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, you could actually do it on a, well, you can on that one because you wouldn't meet the ten days. It's usually Wednesday and Wednesday, Wednesday and Wednesday, and I'll, I'll publish it, so it'd be the Wednesday before the meeting. In this brochure, and I'd like the idea of putting this in with your notification, would it be possible to reference Chapter two, three, eight?
Reference the ordinance?
Yes.
Sure.
How long do you actually know that this is in process and?
You mean an application for a special use permit's in process? Well, if it's one that goes before the Board of Commissioners, generally four months in advance of the, of the, generally any special use permit that goes through the Board of Commissioners has a community meeting prior to submittal, so all the same property owners will be notified, unless there was a change in ownership, would have been notified prior to the community meeting, which would be required prior to submitting an application that would require a special use permit.
Now, the applicant for the special use permit, they do the notification to the, for the community meeting?
For the community meeting, they do, they generally contact our office and we give them the, the addresses, and then they send out that mailing, because it's really their meeting.
Okay, so why can't something like this at that time be given to them? Because my, my problem here is ten days, if a person needs to get an attorney and they find out about this about ten days, they missed a community meeting, I mean, it's pretty hard to, you know, pull in experts within ten days. Well, I wanted to clarify something, you can send out, say, the letters, letters can go out not more than twenty-five days in advance of the meeting, so they can be sent out, it's, that's not, that's the bare minimum, is ten days, and it can also be twenty-five, not more than twenty-five days before the meeting.
When do we typically send them, like, two weeks?
Usually, yeah, two weeks, our mail is, it's slow. It's still a very. Short time to get out an attorney's. And a lot of times, pull that together.
It would, it would probably be, I don't know if we'd need to change the ordinance to require that to be notified with the community meeting, we could think about how to get the notification out sooner.
Could just.
We, I mean, we could require that the community meeting notification include the most current copy of this brochure, I mean, that's, I'm just kind of thinking out loud.
Yeah.
Which would get to those property owners sooner, so, you know, than the ten days. That would be before the application actually comes into the county.
Right. I think at that, at that juncture, I can understand, I think that that would be where everybody has a fair playing field. I'd like to see that, I don't know how you guys feel.
Exactly how many, I want to understand what quasi judicial proceeding is versus somebody just coming in front of the commissioners to speak on an issue.
Right.
What's, and we don't have a Board of, Board of Adjustments is a quasi judicial body, and the commissioners can be from time to time, correct?
Right, right, so the types of permits that the Board of Commissioners hears that are quasi judicial are preliminary plaits for subdivisions.
Okay.
Special use permits for different types of uses.
Okay.
Those are pretty much the two, and special use permits could be for, we've seen them for mining, we've seen them for solar farms, I believe, we've seen them for like plan unit development amendments to the sketch plans in Corolla, so it's generally that subdivisions and, and the special, rare special use permits required.
Okay.
And then the Board of Adjustment hears appeals and variances.
Right, okay.
So going back to that notification, what is that technically? Called the notification, just the public meeting, or is, is that a special terminology?
You mean the, the public notification that goes out the twenty-five and ten day period before the meeting, or are you talking about the community meeting notification?
Community meeting. Is it just called community meeting?
Community meeting, mhm. And, and then that would just probably be an, an update to the procedure that, you know, the notice content must also contain information about quasi judicial hearings when the, when the application has a special use permit, or something like that.
They can be informed from the beginning of the process on, for it.
Right.
This is a quasi judicial decision.
Right, right, it puts you on notice earlier, to your point, if you wanted to, to build a case.
Yeah.
You could.
Yeah, I think if people are aware of that from the beginning.
It gives them adequate notice.
It gives them time to at least get their ducks in a row, and, you know, because trying to determine if they have standing sometimes can be problematic as well.
Right, and that's something that, it's hard, if you're not the person or the body chairing or hearing the evidence, it's hard to tell somebody that they do or don't have standing.
I mean, depending what is being proposed, somebody who lives down, you know, you know, down a creek line could have standing because this, in their mind, could affect their property with drainage, so drainage can be, you know, standing could be somebody that's not necessarily contiguous or.
Yeah, somebody impacted by the.
Yeah.
By the development, yeah.
I understand it, I know it's law, you know, we're just trying, what I'm just want is to give, you know, effective participation and where the citizens can also engage in the process, that's my concern.
Yeah, I mean, alternatively, we could look at, once an application is accepted as complete, you know, sending a notification.
What process?
Again, just thinking out loud, well, that would be once the, the community meeting's held and then the application's received by the county, then there, there could, we could look at potentially notifying then.
For the public community meeting, would the, who would be doing the notification then, would it be the applicant?
The applicant, mhm.
What is their requirement now for notifying?
They have to notify ten days prior to the meeting, they have to.
Send a mail?
Send a letter via mail, mhm.
Is that just?
And they also post their sign, post their own sign. So they mail, mail a letter ten days prior to the meeting and post the sign on the property, ten days prior to?
The applicant does.
Yes.
See, that's, that's one problem I have, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's one with, with this, and I think that's what you're kind of touching on. The applicant, they have standing, the local government has standing, other individuals may have standing if they are an affected party. So the issue I have is, is if the applicant minimizes the communication to people that they think may be effective, affected by what is happening, they seem to be in the driver's seat, not government, and that, I never knew that, I learn something new every day, I've been, that the applicant is actually the one that communicates this, that's, that's the only kind of, it's tripping me up a little bit, just because I think that it puts them in control of arguments to a point in the future.
And, and now there's really not any, I mean, staff will, at a community meeting, can talk about the process of, you know, what boards it will go to and what type of hearing it is, but it's not staff's meeting to run, we just have to attend, and there's certain things we can answer questions about, we're not supposed to get into, we're not supposed to get into a back and forth about the design of the project or, or any of that, it's just about process and ordinance standards.
Okay.
And that's why, to your point about having the applicant communicate things to the, to the public, I was mentioning potentially after an application is received by the county and considered complete to move forward, that might be an opportunity to provide notice. I'm not sure how it's done in other.
I kind of like that because I've been on the opposite end of this, where I was told that I was notified before a planning board meeting, and quote, well, your letter must have got lost in the mail, and I ended up before the commissioners, not even realizing that there was a planning board meeting that had taken place earlier, so I was on the very tail end of this, and, I mean, I didn't, I didn't have time, I basically, you know, just, it wasn't enough time. So my concern is, I'm sorry.
She was just saying that there's no, there's no current notification for planning board, we, they used to, years ago, we used to, years ago, notify planning board as well.
There's no state statute for it, and it's not in the UDO either.
Right, but our, our staff didn't practice that under a couple of planning directors ago. But our, our staff didn't practice that under a couple of planning directors ago.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, I've, ne- knowing this before planning work, but I like the idea if, now, I mean, and I'm not saying that everybody is, you know, who's, who am I to say that it didn't get lost in the mail? It could have. But I do like the idea at the, uh, application complete that the county be the one that send that notification to the adjacent property owners. Is that doable?
It probably is doable. Probably, um, would, it's going to amend another section of the ordinance potentially. I mean, we, we could potentially provide some language under our determination of completeness section of the ordinance that says, you know, once an application subject to an evidentiary hearing is considered complete, you know, public notification process should be followed advising, you know, those adjacent owners of the application being complete. I don't know if that's a practice that's done typically. Probably want to talk to our county attorney about it some as well. But I think it's something we could definitely look into. And something that we're not currently doing. So, I mean, e- whether we change the ordinance or not, I mean, it's, it's up to the board, like, the ordinance is trying to clarify that it's up to the board who can testify and stuff like that.
I completely agree that this is fantastic. I'm glad to see that this would go out in the, um, in that process. So I completely agree with it. I just feel that time is a little bit, um, not at all in favor of the potential person that, you know, the adjacent, yeah, so it's not fair. And we're just, I'm just looking for the, the process to be fair and for everybody to be able to have engagement in the process. That's where I'm looking at.
Yeah, I mean, uh, this board certainly can make, you know, a, a motion or a recommendation that, that be considered. And, and I can take that to the board of commissioners when this is presented to them and, and see if there's, uh, guidance on bringing another amendment forward.
Yeah, and if we, because what Anita is talking about is really separate from what we're voting on as far as, that it's not.
It's tied together, but I think it's, it's about getting notifications sooner.
Right.
As opposed to clarifying who can or can't. Right?
Yes, yes. Uh, I'm not, I, I realize that this is a legal binding hearing that happens. I completely realize that. But I think a lot of people are caught off guard at a very late stage in this hearing process, which to me doesn't seem fair. So we're trying to make sure that everybody has a fair process here.
Yes, understood.
Okay. Any discussion between board members? In hearing, I'm, I'm going to open, uh, for a motion for denial or for approval. And any type of other wording that suggested changes or anything else can be included in the motion.
I'll send some. I'm going to, this is going to be a little bit, um, a little bit wonky here, but, uh, Sherry's really good at pulling it together here. I move to approve P B twenty-four twenty-two Currytuck County because it is in conformance with the unified development ordinance. However, I would like to add that the review process include a direct link to chapter two, section two three eight with the brochure included and that the notification be provided when the application is complete.
May I make a, have a question on that?
Sure.
So are you, so we don't have language really in front of you to consider for the recommendation part of what you're doing?
Correct.
So, um, there's a couple of different ways you could potentially go. One is to table it, to have staff look at that language and bring that back to you and then make a motion forward. Or make a motion based off the language in front of you tonight with a separate recommendation of amending the section you just said.
No, then I recommend tabling it.
Okay.
I, I think that would be the best approach.
I think so too.
Because the wording in, if you approve the motion, uh, with the unified development ordinance and clarifies evidentiary hearing procedures. And I think that's, that, those words kind of.
Well, this kind of already does that, right?
But we would actually piggyback on that, that, that within the motion.
Yeah, with notification, notification being provided when the application is complete.
Let me look at the ordinance real quick on procedure here, make sure we're following it.
This is, this is very good. This really gives the person who doesn't understand what that means that it helps.
Yeah, I think let's table it and, 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 and request your additional changes to the ordinance language be brought back to this board.
So we, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table it and.
You may have to retract your prior motion, right?
I retract my prior motion and I move to table this until staff has a chance to go over what we discussed.
We have a motion to table, uh, this case, P B twenty-four dash twenty-two. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, light ones. Okay, motion is tabled. Okay, moving on to our third item under new business, planning board twenty-four dash twenty-two. Imagine Currytuck twenty forty vision plan, request for land use plan amendment to adjust allowable densities on the mainland and revise the future land use map for the Currytuck station area. The proposed amendments include reclassifying one thousand thirty-two acres from G three to O two, five hundred and ninety-nine acres from G three to G two and two hundred and seventy, excuse me, and seven hundred and ninety-six acres from G three to G two. These changes affect properties located near South Hills Road and Northwest Backwards Road specifically. Tax map three, parcel one B, tax map five, parcels ten and ten C, ten D, ten E, eleven, twelve A, twelve B, thirteen, fourteen A, fourteen C, fourteen D, and fourteen E. Tax map nine, parcels forty-seven J, four, forty-eight C and forty-nine A. Ta- tax map six, parcels one L, one U, one W, one X, one Y, forty-seven K, forty-eight B, fifty A, and sixty-nine in Moayok Township. And I'm not going to read that one again.
Very good, thank you. Um, oh. So I'll start just briefly, um, well firstly, you should have a set of three pieces of paper stapled together that are also pages of the land use plan. Does everyone have that? Starts with, uh, coin jock recommendations at the top, right? These are just a couple of other changes that are going to be related to the Currytuck station changes proposed. Um, we'll get to that here in a moment. Firstly, we'll just kind of do an overview of some of the land use plan transects. We know that the O two reserved lands is generally comprised of wetlands. These are generally in private ownership, um, and it's areas that's similar to the conservation designation previously. The G one areas are low density growth. That's the tan or this is appearing a little yellowish to me area. Uh, it's intended for ag lands and low density rural residential growth, uh, which is similar to the limit, uh, limited service, the prior plan. Then we have G two controlled growth, which is, the areas shown in orange here, which are for medium density residential developments and neighborhood scale commercial nodes. And this section is similar to, uh, more similar to the full service. There's G three mixed use centers and corridors, which we know Currytuck Station. You can see it's burgundy and this, um, this amendment will apply to that area of the county. But this is for, uh, areas supported by major transportation networks, public water and wastewater, community greenway system. Again, the G three is going to be one of your more, uh, intense areas for develop, where development is, is proposed to be targeted for, um, growth in these areas. And then G four, which is the pink, are the village centers, which are characterized by compact street network, well developed pedestrian network and readily available water or wastewater. These village centers should be developed into complete communities with walkable neighborhoods and pedestrian oriented streetscapes. And you can see there's this pink area in Moayok and Currytuck in this area where we are right now around the, uh, canal as well as down in Randy. And I just go over that because some of the changes tonight are going to be to the, proposed to the Currytuck station area. And I just wanted to review the transects of the new land use plan. Oh, okay. Um, a couple of other policies of the plan. This land use goal one, you see pretty frequently about encouraging development to occur at densities appropriate for their location. And then land use policy one point one, that the future land use map is a guide for decision making, planning for infrastructure and conservation, but should not be the sole basis for land use decisions. You may recall the, a couple of meetings ago, we looked at some changes to the U D O with respect to, um, taking full limited conservation terminology out and replacing it with the transect methodology. We talked about, um, the maximum densities that the ordinance allows. Currently, this chart is showing you the maximum, this is absolute maximum you can get, um, density wise per acre based on the zoning districts and the land use plan classifications. And then here is the language that you have in your agenda packet in a chart form. And so we'll just go over the changes here. They show up in your, uh, I have it in this chart form to show you and I can't remember if that was in, included in the agenda packet or not. I think it was. So you could see everything all together, but each different sub area of the county is on different pages of the plan at the bottom of the future land use map. These charts are there. So here you can see that the first change to the densities here are to amend the maximum density for the O two reserved lands transect on the mainland from one dwelling unit per three acres to up to point four dwelling units per acre. And this particular change brings consistency with the ordinance allowance in the ag zoning district for the point four dwelling units per acre with sixty percent open space set aside. Uh, you may recall the Ashbrook Estates, um, land use plan amendment where there were, there was a request for, um, it was ag zoning, but the land use plan classified the site as, uh, O two. And they wanted to get the point four dwelling units per acre. So they needed a land use plan amendment prior to the subdivision being approved. So the, the density could be consistent with the, uh, the zoning district. You, you remember that one? And so what this does is it takes, it basically, the ordinance is saying in ag zoning district, you can get up to point four dwelling units per acre with sixty percent open space. And so the board of commissioners in our work session that we had, I believe it was in June of this year, June fifth, we talked about, um, just making that consistent. So a, a land use plan amendment is not necessary to do an ag subdivision and get up to point four dwelling units per acre. That, that changes just to the mainland. Any questions on that particular change?
Does this also include like condos?
No, this is only for, I, like, this is only for ag land. So basically it's point three three would be your calculation if you did one dwelling unit per three acres. So point three three was the max. It's taking it to point four four. So in ag, there's two options for subdivisions. You can do, uh, sixty percent open space and get point four dwelling units per acre. I believe it's fifty percent open space gets you point three three dwelling units per acre. So you're getting more open space. More density for more open space. Yeah, that's, and I have it here, I'll, I'll show you just real, um, so you can see here in the ag, the maximum density after this land use plan amendment will go to point four in ag.
It looks like the preserved lands that also.
Yeah, it really should just be the O two. The, the preserved lands are generally, um, not in private ownership.
But some are.
Mm, they shouldn't be. The preserved lands shouldn't be.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the change for, um, the O two transect maximum densities on the mainland. Then there is a change to reduce the maximum density in the G three transect of the Moayok sub area. And this was related to the Currytuck station plan that envisioned, you know, a, a plan and you might have areas that had more dense, that were more dense, like center station. From up to twelve dwelling units per acre to up to three, and that was subject to the Currytuck station master plan. The board did, uh, remove those zoning districts from the ordinance. And so this changes up to three dwelling units per acre to bring consistency with the U D O.
A lot of times though, going back to the reserved or the mixed use centers, of course, that would be typically on sewer, correct?
Typically, yes.
But the reserved land, you, they don't have typically access to sewer. So we're increasing the density. Would there be a requirement for a pack unit? Or, I mean, I mean, what's a septic require? The size of a septic require?
Well, I mean, it depends on the land and, and the quality of the land, yeah. So, um, I can give you.
I'm just concerned about the, um, I, like, how do you get all those septics in small areas?
Well, it's not changing lot size. It's not changing the minimum lot size requirements. It's just the density calc. And then you have to design your subdivision to show that you can have the sixty percent open space, meet your minimum lot size, have your required road widths, have your required setbacks, which were also increased recently to fifty feet for new lots. So the alter- alternatively, you would see, potent, you would potentially see land use plan amendments from O two to G one in order to get, uh, that extra point. land use plan amendments from O2 to G1 in order to get that extra point zero seven dwelling units per acre.
Any more questions for staff?
All right.
Any discussion?
Well, I got, I've got more. Yeah, sorry. We're two in, we got, we got a little bit to go here. All right, so then we're, we'll just, since we just kind of went back to O2, we'll go back to, we understand what we're doing with the G3, just kind of taking the reference out to Currituck Station and reducing the density back down to what our current zoning districts basically allow. And removing the reference to the Currituck Station master plan. Then, we're reducing the maximum density in the G3 transect of the Grandy sub-area from three to four dwelling units without sewer, and six to 10 dwelling units with sewer, to up to three dwelling units without sewer, or up to four dwelling units with sewer, or as established in the civic master plan.
And that's per acre?
Per acre, yes.
So that would be three houses on one acre, roughly?
What? Up to three dwelling units per acre without sewer, up to four with sewer. That would be with rezoning, most likely a conditional rezoning, because if you go, let me go back to this chart. You can see here that the maximum density you can get without a conditional rezoning of your project right now is MXR, two dwelling units per acre. So with the conditional mixed residential or the other planned development mixed, which would be a legislative decision, basically both are conditional rezonings. You would be able to get currently with the maximum UDO densities up to three dwelling units per acre. And this was, this was a discussion with the Board of Commissioners, with some members wanting to keep the up to four without, with sewer here, even though there's not currently a provision in the ordinance that allows you to get there, other than you guys just heard at your last meeting was the Grandy Village, where they were able to get their application in prior to that ordinance change. So, but this is where the board ended up agreeing to move forward. It is a reduction from what's currently in the, in the land use plan for both. I mean, we're going from three to four to up to three, and six to 10 to up to four. And then also in the Grandy Village Centers, which is right beside that, it's going to be up to three dwelling units per acre without sewer, and up to four with sewer as established in the civic master plan, to bring consistency with those areas. Any questions on the Grandy change? All right. Then we have amending the density for the G3 transect down here, Point Harbor sub-area, from up to two dwelling units per acre without sewer to, or up to four dwelling units with sewer to up to three dwelling units per acre period, or as established in a civic master plan. And then, then there's a statement here at the bottom of the chart that's just giving a little bit more definition to the term sewer, that it shall mean a state-permitted centralized wastewater system. That could be public or private, but that's what that, that means. And we have some of both. So that's the changes to the density in the density chart. We'll move to the Currituck Station plan. I showed, this is the overall, this was the prior overall Currituck Station sub-districts that were adopted into the ordinance. You may remember Center Station, Junction, Cypress, Oak Trail, Crossroads, Newtown, Moayok Run. And each of these areas kind of had their own description of what the appropriate uses would be. And so, oh, going the wrong way, sorry y'all. So here's the current land use plan designation of the site, and you can see that the whole site is G3, and the reason being it was tied to the Currituck Station plan. And then here's the proposed changes. There were a couple of different changes of the map shown to the Board of Commissioners, and this is the one the board agreed to move forward with the change, which is keeping the front portion adjacent to the highway as G3. And then the areas that were, as you transition toward the back, you would go to G2 and then G1 ultimately. And then the portions that were, I believe it was Moayok Run, or Oak Trail rather, that were more environmentally sensitive areas, that those would remain, or O2, or they would become O2, rather. So this is your change, this is the proposed change that the board saw. Just to show you the, the current zoning, so you can see that the impact of the change to the land use plan doesn't really impact the current zoning or the existing uses or what potentially could be developed there currently without a rezoning. And then, I just, this was just showing you the different parcels that are part of this back portion of Currituck Station, the sizes of them, and what's changing. That was also in your agenda packet. So, any questions on the map change to the Currituck Station area? Okay. To the handout that you got, these are just a couple of more strike-throughs related to your Currituck Station plan. So we're proposing a strike-through here on page 75 of the Currituck Station Civic Master Plan. All right, so that's on, on page 75 then. In the matrix, there's also a reference to the civic master plan for Currituck Station. We're going to strike that through. That's under the long-range planning. Then on page 140, the county policies, there's a statement that says, and this is in the Northern Mainland Implementation Matrix, so we know we're talking about the Northern Mainland, Recruit Non-Residential Development and Medical Service Providers and Related Businesses. To me, it made sense to just keep that language but remove the Currituck Station because I think that's still something that would be a goal or an action. And then, we have a strike-through of Maintain Recruitment Efforts for Currituck Station. And then staff does recommend approval of this request because the land use plan amendment's in conformance with the ordinance and the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan transect profiles, as well as land use goal one and land use policy 1.1. And I would ask if the, the board is okay with these proposed changes, these additional strike-throughs, that you include that in your motion, please.
Could I ask a question about, it's on 140? And there are two points there, excuse me. And the first one says, "Consider acquisition of Eagle Creek wastewater system" and the third item, "Plan for future expansion of the Moayok wastewater treatment plant." Are these movements that are already in, in place or in gear and likely to happen? Or is it at this, is it at a very early stage of consideration?
Yeah, I, I don't know that, that the consider acquisition, acquisition of Eagle Creek is something the county is looking to move forward on at all with respect to expansion of the Moayok wastewater treatment plant. I do believe that will be something that the county will be looking at.
I don't know if, what, is that planned for already? Do you know?
Yeah, so that was, that was part of a plan, so.
Isn't that what they brought the, the portfolios in for to?
Well, they brought that in to try to get it into compliance.
Any more questions for staff? Any discussion within the board? Hearing that, I'm going to hear no discussion. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for a motion. I hereby move to approve PB 24-21 Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan Amendment because the amendment is in conformance with Unified Development Ordinance and the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, G3 mixed-use centers and corridors, G2 controlled growth, G1 low-density growth, and O2 reserved lands transect profiles, as well as land use goal one and land use policy 1.1. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do I have a motion on the floor? Do I hear a second?
May I just ask a quick question, sorry? Does that include the additional changes presented tonight?
I'm sorry, what, no?
Does your motion include the additional changes to the three pages you, you received this evening?
I, I move to recommend approval of the transect profile seven through, seven through 11, and the Northern Mainland Implementation Matrix.
If you, if you just make a comment with the, the changes proposed, the additional changes proposed tonight, that should be sufficient.
Okay, and the changes proposed in the transect profile, is that?
The changes proposed this evening.
I'm sorry?
Because there's also changes to the matrix. If you said the transect profile and matrix.
And the matrix.
Great.
We good with that? Sherri?
Sherri, you want that, you good?
I got to ask you. Just make it up. We all right? Okay, all right. We have a motion on, on the floor. Do I hear a second? A second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed likewise. Motion passed. Okay, any announcements?
I'll let the board know that the Grandy Village Conditional Mixed Residential Application was approved by the Board of Commissioners. The Flora rezoning was deferred by the applicant who was out, out of town, and that will be scheduled for the October 21st Board of Commissioners. And then I just wanted to introduce you to JoVita Hood. She is a planner in our department, and she's worked in several different roles, and she's taken on more duties as a planner, and so she's here, and you probably see more of Jo.
Evening. Hello. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.